Regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:01 PM on October 20th, 2020. This regular meeting of the OCEO School Board is being conducted in person and in compliance with Minnesota Statute 13D .01. However, due to the current pandemic and consistent with directives of the CDC and applicable executive orders, it is not feasible to conduct this meeting in person without restricting the number of persons in attendance. Consistent with current health guidelines and applicable executive orders, up to 10 members of the community are able to be present in the boardroom with us tonight. This meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be archived on the district website. Consistent with executive order, a face covering is required to be worn during the meeting, but may be temporarily removed when speaking. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left to your right are Director John Bristol, Director Kelsey Dawson-Walton, Director Tanya Simons, myself, Director Mike Ostafi, Director Jackie Miskata-Jones, Director Heather Douglas, and Superintendent Corey McIntyre. The superintendent's cabinet and other district administrators are seated in another conference room, with a livestream of this meeting being shown on a monitor. Individuals will come into the boardroom as needed. At this time, I am very pleased to welcome Basswood Elementary Girl Scout Troop 1-8-125. They had a question and answer session with Superintendent McIntyre earlier this afternoon, and we'll be watching the livestream of tonight's meeting in the nearby cafeteria. Troop members, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Troop, will you please recite the Girl Scout promise and the law?
I will do my best to be honest and fair, friendly and helpful, considerate and caring, courageous and strong, and responsible for what I say and do, and to respect myself and others, respect authorities, and use reason which is wisely, make the world a better place, and be a citizen to every Girl Scout. On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people in all times, and deliver by the Girl Scout law.
Thank you very much. All right, thanks again to Troop 1-8-125. Tonight, board members, in front of you is the agenda. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda this evening? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as is?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of accepting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes six to zero. The next agenda item is audience opportunity to address the board. We have no audience this evening, and therefore, no one addressing us. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Superintendent McIntyre?
Thank you, Chair Ostafi. True to form, with things moving right along, I'll be brief as well. Tonight, my superintendent's update, I just have three quick items for you. First of all, with the inclement weather today and the snowstorm, I thought it was timely that we remind everyone, as we move into the winter months, to please be watching your email and phone for cancellation notifications. Also, now that we're equipped with distance learning for pre-K through 12, severe weather doesn't necessarily mean we'll need to cancel school due to severe weather. I also want to remind people that we'll be moving into flu season, and with more time indoors, it's a critical time for parents to do those daily health screenings for their children before sending them to school, and that students and staff who are ill should stay home, especially now that the flu season is in that context of the COVID-19 pandemic. Next, we're excited to announce that the district has launched its new website. It does look very different from what everyone's used to, but that's for three important reasons. First, it provides us a much stronger mobile-first, more user-friendly format on all devices. It improves our accessibility for all users, and it creates a more consistent user experience in regards to quality, content, and navigation amongst all of our sites. I want to take a moment to thank our communications department under the leadership of Barb Olson for their work during the transition to the new website over the last few months. And then lastly, we are in the process of planning our 2021 Student Stakeholder Survey. For this year's surveys, we plan to administer the student surveys during the school day between November and March in grades K through 12. Our surveys will be more of a pulse survey formation, and will include short check-in surveys through the school year, and a longer, more comprehensive survey, which is more likely to be administered in the spring. The survey serves the following purposes for us. It collects feedback from students about their experiences in class, especially this year, with the learning models that we're implementing during the course of the year. It provides teachers with student feedback on reflection on their classroom instruction and student engagement strategies. It provides leaders with student feedback to learn the strengths and opportunities about school and district improvement, and helps us meet state requirements for principal and teacher development and evaluation as well. So please know that the survey is voluntary and student responses are kept confidential. After students log into the survey in the system using their regular username and password, all the questions are optional. Access to responses are intentionally limited for confidentiality reasons. So parents may choose to have their son or daughter not take the survey by completing and returning an opt-out form prior to October 31st of this year. Chair Ostafi, I'll turn it back to you. That's my update for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent McIntyre. Our next agenda item is school board reports. Director Bristol, do you have a report, committee reporter update?
No update for me, thank you.
Thank you. Director Dawson-Walton, do you have a committee reporter update?
No.
Thank you. Director Simons, do you have a committee report or update?
I do, I have three. So first, the ECHMAC met on Monday evening, but I'll reserve that report for you, Chair Ostafi, as you were there also.
Thanks for warning me.
And today, the district met for our consultation with the Tribal Nations Education Committee. And so, that will be the subject of a future conversation from Superintendent McIntyre, either via email or in a work session. But I did want to note that as the board representative on that, it was really great to see the progress being made in how we serve our students and how we partner with our American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee. Particularly of note, I thought it was really great work to learn about the work that we're doing in language skills and our overall curriculum to ensure that we're meeting our legal requirements in serving our Native American students, as well as educating all of our students on our tribal nations and integrating that into the curriculum. The advisory committee, parent committee, did identify some concerns that we continue to work through, and this board will hear about that. And we really want to ensure that when we are providing education regarding the culture, heritage, and history of our tribal nations, that we're being very careful to ensure that we're standard in how we do that, that we're respectful and honoring to our students and to our tribal nations. And sometimes because not everybody has, everyone may have best intentions, but not have as much knowledge as we all may like to have, sometimes there are mistakes that can be made in that. And so, we want to ensure that that's corrected very timely. So we'll learn more about that. So I just wanted to note that that took place today. Secondly, the advisory committee for the Center for Innovation in the Arts, SEDA, which is a partnership with North Hennepin Community College and other partners, met today. And we were really getting an update kind of on the status of the state bonding bill that was passed. So this particular project is about developing an innovation and arts center that would be located in Brooklyn Park, and it would be a regional art center. The interest of the school district here is really about how we could leverage that facility for the benefit of our students, possibly as a magnet school or more career pathways. So today, we talked about the update that particular funding did make it to the list in the bonding bill, however, it was not included in the final bonding bill that was passed. So that particular group with North Hennepin Community College will begin to really focus on ensuring that there is private funding that can establish a base for the potential for future bonding bill assistance. One of the things of note in that committee today was a very robust discussion about really focusing on the economic development benefits for the community, and really equipping students, whether they may be our students or North Hennepin's students in the future, with really strong employable skills to be able to execute in careers in arts and in innovation. So it's really exciting to kind of get all of these committees meeting again and beginning to make some progress forward. So hopefully, we'll have more updates about that in the future. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Director Simons. Director Miskata-Jones, do you have a committee reporter update?
I have no committees that have met since the last meeting.
Thank you. Director Douglas, do you have a report or update?
I do. Just a point of clarification, are you going to then update for the policy committee meeting at our next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a second.
Yep.
The policy committee meeting was just prior to this, so anyways. I do have two other updates. I had a board meeting October 8th at District 287. We did hear from our local 209 union. They took the opportunity to address the school board, and we've had some ongoing conversations with them and are hopefully very close to a resolution. We also had an updated report about how our connected learning and hybrid learning is going. I just wanted to share too that I really love the approach that we're taking with the language that we're using in our connected learning, specifically connected learning, and the emphasis around how we're making connections with our students even though we can't be with them physically. A lot of these students require significantly more attention than an average student would, and so making that a priority is critical in their education. We also accepted and adopted an e-learning plan in lieu of cold weather or snow days, which would essentially be distance learning, similar to here. We heard from Radius Guess, which is our Director of Equity and Inclusion, and provided us another update on our year of learning racial equity work. And we also adopted our planning calendar, so we're just getting ready for the next season of learning. And that is pretty much that meeting. We have another meeting coming up on Thursday. And then, I'm really, really excited because DPAC met yesterday, finally. It's been a long time since we've had the opportunity to meet. And for DPAC, we had a huge turnout. We had about 35 people, and I'm really excited to say that our representation across the school district and multiple sites has increased significantly, which was our primary goal going into this year, is increasing representation across school sites. And I believe that we have about 20 sites represented now, whereas before, we had about 13. So that's a really big deal. And I believe there's supposed to be about 40 new members, but about 35 showed up, so that was excellent. We are also talking about what our plans will be for this year, so we break out into two groups. One is focused primarily on social-emotional, and the other is more like curriculum and operational type things. And so, we just really got to know each other and started to begin the process of dividing up into the two different groups, and I'm really excited for the work that we have coming out. And everyone else was really excited, and as always, it's not too late to join. So if anybody's interested in joining, please contact Jeremy Willey. And that's about it, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Director Douglas. At this time, I do have a report from the ECHMAC meeting, which was last night. So a couple of things, it was the first in-person meeting I think ECHMAC's had since January or February. I'm sorry, not in-person, but live. Overview of ECHMAC and for all of the new members. We welcomed the new members and introduced all the members and a reason for them volunteering on the ECHMAC committee. And we did several small group breakouts to discuss what had been done and the data that was in front of us, and then agreed to the meeting schedule, starting with the next meeting, I believe, in November, and moving that work forward. So, very good. That's the end of my reports. At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is presentations. Superintendent McIntyre will present an update on the learning model. Superintendent McIntyre?
Thank you, Chair Ostafi. So board members tonight, I'll give you just a brief update on our ready-to-restart learning model work, with some new information, you know, we get each week, and so I want to update you from last week's information and give you some previews of what's to come. So our objectives here, next slide, is just to give you a quick review of our decision-making tools, an update on the COVID-19 case rate data, and our MDE/MDH Hennepin County guidance. Next slide. So your materials tonight, we gave you a printed copy, it's a little easier to follow along with, regarding our readiness dashboards that reflect our 10 key readiness indicators for each of the learning models we've been working on. And one of those readiness indicators that informs our decision to change the learning models is meeting those state requirements on COVID-19 case rate numbers with consultation with our state and county agencies, which I'll update you on in just a moment. Next slide. On our ISD 279 Safe Learning Plan levels, which is basically our version of the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan, it reflects the district's current Level 3 status with our K-12 hybrid model that we started on September 28th. And, next slide, please. In order to make decisions, we've shared this a few times now, but I think I keep hearing there's, it's a first time for lots of people each time we go through it. So I continue to want to bring this forward to make sure we're as transparent as we can on our decision-making model, when it comes to changing our learning models, as well as how we inform improvements to the learning models we already implemented. So just a quick overview of those five-step process in this decision-making framework. First, we continuously review the revised county and city case rate data, including our, and in conjunction with our key readiness indicators, those 10 indicators that we have been using. Second, we complete the required consultation with Department of Education, Department of Health, along with our Hennepin County Public Health colleagues, and continue to solicit input and feedback from our district and school leaders, our union leadership, and the feedback that we receive from our staff families and students. Third, then we bring those recommendations to the board, once we have enough information to keep you informed, or make recommendations for any change, or to stay put in a particular learning model. Fourth, then, that really is up now, at that point, to the board after making that recommendation for any district-wide decisions that we make regarding our learning model. And then lastly, once decisions are made, we work hard to communicate and update stakeholders on the status of our learning model and implement any changes needed at that point. So in the next slide, what you'll see is, by review again, just a way to ground us on the model parameters that are provided to us by the state of Minnesota, based on the case rate ranges that are provided, based on cases per 10,000 over a 14-day window. So by way of review, just that 0 to 9 county rate number, if it's in that 0 to 9 range, that indicates in-person learning for all students. When we're in that 10 to 19 range, that indicates in-person elementary and hybrid model at the secondary level. When we're in the 20 to 29 range, which is our current status, that's hybrid for all students. And then, 30 to 49 reflects a hybrid for elementary and distance learning for secondary students. And then, if we were to get to over 50, that, based on this model, would indicate distance learning for all students. I know we've reviewed that each meeting, but I feel like it's important to keep reminding and sharing that information, as I know it's sometimes the first time for some of our viewers and listeners. So through the updated information from last week, the updated case rate data from Hennepin County through October 5th is that the countywide rate increased from 22.3 to now 23.4, based on last Thursday's results. And then, on the next slide, what you'll see here is updated local city data here, and I do want to stress again that we use the countywide rate for decision-making, and we use the city-specific information as additional ways to give us local context and situational awareness as part of our factors for decision-making, along with our operational readiness and key readiness factors that we look at. So last Thursday, the county report showed that our city rates, we saw some increases in, for example, at Brooklyn Center, we're now at 31.3, at Maple Grove at 27.3, Brooklyn Park at 24.6, and Plymouth at 17.1, is our current status. In consultation with MDE and MDH and our regional support team, along with Hennepin County Public Health, pretty similar guidance from the week prior. Basically, a close attention to the fact that case rates continue to increase across the county and in the cities in our district, and there's continued concerns about the community spread. Increased concerns about the record number of daily case rates, as we all see in the media each day, and that comes, you know, in a delayed format to us through this formula. And with that information, what we've been advised on is that we can expect to see this show up in that weekly case and city rate data, in our school model decision-making formula in the reporting periods to come, is it's expected to see those increases show up. And then, just, there's been kind of continual reminders of the fact that we work hard to be in alignment with the executive order of the governor and the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan Model learning criteria or parameters that we saw just a minute ago. And then, lastly, I'll just point out, you know, if we see a trend upward, which seems to be the trend lately, and we get to that threshold of 30, that's probably the time when we're going to start talking about needing to think about elementary, hybrid, secondary distance learning, in compliance with that Safe Learning Plan model and the executive order, as we talked about in our last meeting, districts cannot be in a lesser restrictive model than what that county rate indicates. So we're watching closely that trajectory, and we'll continue to consult with our state and local county officials. The next slide is, just, I wanted to kind of hit this again as it's our tentative calendar or potential shift calendar date, and what I wanted to stress here is, this is kind of lays out the meetings we already have scheduled, where we have the opportunity to bring forward new information and any recommendations, based on the fact that they're already scheduled, and we'll, you know, use those meetings first. Now, I'll stress that, and we've experienced this, that if a shift between models due to health and safety reasons may also be made more quickly, and need to be communicated and implemented faster than what the calendar might suggest. So we've done that, we just did that recently on October 12th, based on the collective information we receive and when we receive it. As we've talked about in other meetings, we have a little more agility moving into more restrictive models that probably include distance learning, and it takes a little longer to move into more in-person learning models because of the operations areas that need a little more time to move equipment and furniture and, you know, transportation and things like that, that just need a little extra time. So moving forward onto the next slide here, what our team is working on right now is we have given you dashboards for four models, and we're going to, we're working on currently a dashboard for our fifth model, the elementary hybrid and secondary distance learning model. So we'll be bringing that forward to you as soon as we can get that completed, and it'll look very similar to the models you have in front of you tonight, using many of those same readiness indicators, just bringing together some models we have experience with in a different combination. And then lastly, on next steps, we will, just by way of the calendar, we'll continue to evaluate that new case rate data that we'll get on Thursday, October 22nd. We will give consideration to any new information provided by the MDE Commissioner on the call with the superintendent statewide, also on Thursday, the 22nd. Then we have our MDE and MDH Regional Support Team in Hennepin County consultation on Friday, the 23rd, and we'll continue to just monitor that, and as we've done so far, continue to adjust and pivot as conditions do evolve. And we'll, you know, it feels like it's a weekly update, and things are continuing to change, but I think we continue to show that we're willing to pivot and change course as, as conditions require. So that's just a quick update on what we learned last week. Keep you posted, as we always do each week. And with that, Chair Ostafi, I'll turn it back to you for facilitation of any questions or comments that you may have.
All right, thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. Let's start with Director John Bristol. John?
No questions, thank you.
Director Dawson-Walton?
You know, thank you. My only question or comment is how, and we talked about this last time, but, you know, moving forward, and I understand the pulse survey, but in terms of, you know, we do receive a lot of feedback and emails from, you know, of course, not only our parents, but some of our educators, and just looking at, gosh, I mean, from having to clean desks to kind of be the nurse also, and to be, you know, many, wearing many hats, you know, and I understand we're in a pandemic, so people are, it's not normal, anything. But how are you, like, you know, getting kind of feedback directly from staff that's maybe creative, or things that we haven't thought about before?
Yeah, well, our goal is to try to get feedback from across the organization and all the different work groups, in addition to our families and students, right? So we're gaining real valuable experience every day that we're in the model, so now we're just a few weeks in. So we're trying hard to, for example, one example would be what we learned with the hybrid model, especially the secondary level, is attendance is a challenge. So we have brought a group of teachers together to really study and problem-solve, how can we come up with new solutions to that attendance issue? So that, that group of teachers met right before our MEA break, and then met again last night, to continue to figure out what can we do differently in regards to that particular issue? So we're, that's one example, how we're bringing staff in, and we try to do that with other work groups as well, whether it's our food and nutrition staff, or our ESPs, or our custodians, you know. To your point, Director Dawson-Walton, the jobs are different now, and so we're really learning, like, all right, how do we evolve with that? And it's, that has been a challenge, but we're trying to do our best to just listen to the feedback and then make adjustments where we, where we can.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, Director Simons?
I don't have questions. I think it was really helpful to have toured the schools and to speak with principals in terms of what they were doing, and we had the update last meeting as well. That was really helpful to understand what's happening at the buildings. And I would just continue to reiterate my support, and I think the support of this board, to provide any additional resources that might be temporarily needed as we can work in this unprecedented time. So to the extent that we might need different ideas on how to handle cleaning, supplemental cleaning resources, or additional staffing to manage what is happening, I think that this board would be highly supportive of that. And again, appreciate all of the work. I think we want to continue to get that teacher workload as close to kind of that baseline, so that we're not having incremental work through collaboration and innovative ideas. So just want to continue to hear about what we're doing, so that we can navigate the feedback and navigate kind of all of the different points as to what's happening in our buildings and.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. The unique challenge this year is the enrollment has been more fluid than typical years, and that has carried into, deeper into the year. So that has caused us to make staffing adjustments as well. We have added some staff where we needed to, and also where there's disparities in class sizes and things like that, trying to address those with resources within too. So it's a combination of approaches. And then also, learning from our internal stakeholders, and then also learning from some of our external colleagues around the metro, learning from each other what, what things may have worked, and how can we modify those ideas and bring them to our district and make them unique to us. So it's going to take all those strategies to make progress through the improvement efforts we want to make, right? Because we know we can do better. It's a model we're just, you know, we've never done before, so we're a few weeks in, and we're learning a lot, and we're really open to the feedback that is coming to us right now. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Director Miskata-Jones?
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate all the transparency and giving us updates so often. It's very helpful when people are reaching out and asking questions. It's very helpful when people are reaching out and asking questions. I still have a lot of questions about, I'm just curious about a poll survey on, on how things are going and maybe some comparative on what's, what's been better experiences for kids. I appreciate, for those of you watching, Superintendent McIntyre asked the Girl Scout troops what they liked about the different models, so that was, you know, anecdotal information, which I think it can be helpful if we can get some more of that kind of qualitative. And then whatever, I just want to reiterate, whatever resources we can give to, on a temporary one-year basis to help with workload issues for any of the staff would be, I'm open to that as well. I'm concerned about several of our staff who have been writing about how they're burning out already.
And I would want to echo that concern. We've been in regular ongoing conversation with, with Kelly Wilson and his team on how can we support our staff and Becky Hespin as well, our ESPs. What strategies might that take and being very open to what additional resources could that mean? I think there's a little bit of challenge and it's not always more dollars that it requires. It's a really challenging time for subs, it's a really challenging time for finding staff right now, for a number of reasons that I won't go into tonight. So it's almost more of a human capital challenge as much as it is a dollars and cents one. And that's a tough one, but we're working through it together and what can we do even with what we already have, right? So it's been a hard time to recruit and retrain new staff members in particular areas that you've heard about in the past, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. Director Douglas?
Thank you. So I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, but I also wanted to make a comment of my own. Over the course of the last week or so, I have heard from a number of people some deeply personal and deeply troubling stories of how their students are faring right now in both hybrid and distance learning. And I'm really, really concerned about the social, emotional, mental health, well-being of our students and our teachers in, in this situation. And I just wanted to reiterate how important it is that we address these issues urgently and that I believe that it is the will of the board and it is certainly a priority to me that we think outside the box on how we can address these issues and that we be willing to contribute the necessary funds to achieve better results for our families. So I, I think that we really need to focus on that. I know we have a lot of teaching that seems to be challenging enough as it is, but we also have to address the issues that our students are dealing with that is preventing them from learning.
Yep.
So I just wanted to, to draw attention to that really serious issue. That's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Douglas. I have a question. So we're at twenty-five and change in the county. Jumping up five points above thirty seems, would be an outlier, but it's certainly possible. You would have a call, you, we would see the numbers on Thursday, you would have a guidance call on Thursday and then another one on Friday. If it's over thirty this Friday, let's say barely over thirty, would we be required to move into distance learning for high school?
I don't know if we'd be required at that point to move that quickly. That's what I need to add, you know, get consultation on from our state and county experts, right?
Okay.
So I don't, you're right, I don't know if it'll jump to that degree, but I wouldn't be surprised if it did, if not this week, by next week. This is the way it all seems to be unfolding. But, you know, until we get those numbers, I don't want to say that with any form of certainty, right?
Okay. No, but I just want to be clear, if we get to a certain number and the state says, you're done, we're distance, then I don't want to be in an emergency mode. Can we plan a meeting for Friday afternoon after your meeting? And we can cancel it if there's nothing to do, but can we at least plan something for sometime Friday? Get it on our calendars now so that we're not reacting in an emergency manner? But if for some reason we are told no, that we have to move back to distance for high school, that we are prepared to act upon that?
Well, my approach to this point has been only cancel, only schedule a meeting when we need it. So I'm nervous about scheduling and canceling when we don't, but if that's the will of the board, we could do it, whether it's a Friday or a Monday. You know, what I'd rather have is the information in hand than speculating, right? And that's the tough spot we're in, I think.
So your, your assumption is that the state will give us grace of at least a week to move back into a more restrictive model?
Well, they're not, they've never said, once the numbers come out, you got to be in that model. So I think there's some, you know, space to, maybe even as soon as our next board meeting, right? I've never really asked that question because they've, they've never put parameters on how fast you gotta move within days.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure we were prepared, and if we don't have to act that quick, then that's fine.
Yeah.
But I don't want to be seen acting in an emergency manner that we're actually being planful about this. So.
Yeah, my hope is the model that we use to make decisions is our planful approach. And once we have that information, then it's a, you know, taking all that into consideration and making a judgment on, is it time? Is that, is it this week or is it the following week? Sometimes that happens, we already have a meeting scheduled, right? So we can utilize that existing time. Other times it's fallen in between, like it did recently where we had to have a special meeting to do it. And we, we did that special meeting ahead of the MEA break for a reason too. We wanted to make sure we had noticed our families and staff ahead of a long weekend. So there's lots of variables at play, I think, there, and we can do that approach if the board wishes to do that. I do think that we would have a little time to, I don't think we'd have to necessarily turn around and have the decision made by Friday or Monday.
Okay. So if there's little or no risk of us being told that Monday we're, we're changing models, then that's fine. But, you know, we may want to, you know, and if that, if there is direction on Friday that we're going to have to change soon, then we can schedule that meeting for Monday within our window of time. It's not an emergency meeting, it's a planned meeting, and then we'll all be fine.
Just like last.
I just want to make sure that we have a good cadence going and we're not scrambling at the last minute.
Yep. My, my hope is to use our existing scheduled meetings whenever we can.
Right.
But if that's too far out, then we, we have the special meetings. And I want to point out that being a special meeting versus kind of that emergency style one, so I always consult with Tim on that too and how to make that work. So I wish I had, could give you a little more certainty on it, but we're in that space of, it feels like new information each week, and then we're learning pretty quick on how to adjust once we get new, new information. So, but what I've been doing also is, you know, trying to consult with all of you ahead of that and make sure that we seem to be seeing things the same way.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I would like to just add just a couple of comments like I did last time in the sense that, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge how hard this, this whole thing is on everyone. And, you know, there are clearly strong feelings across the board on, on this, what models to be in. And I really do appreciate how for some, it's, it's very stressful, and depending on the model for some, it gives, it gives us relief, right? So that's really, really difficult and there's this, some who strongly support our decisions and others who strongly don't. And, and I wish we weren't in that kind of environment, but it is our reality at least for now. And try to reassure everyone that we're trying to use the best data and information and all of our readiness indicators, looking at it from a comprehensive lens to make those decisions as best we can. But I do appreciate the patience and understanding that everyone's trying to have. I know it's, it's getting exhausting, it's, it's tiring, and we're asking a lot of a lot of people right now, families, parents, students, staff. So know that we take every decision very seriously and, because it's, impacts people's daily lives every time we change. So thank you for just letting me add a few of those comments.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Cheryl Stoffey?
Yeah.
I just want to ask one question, Superintendent McIntyre. So with the emails I receive, whether it's because of DLA or hybrid, one question I do, I have had a lot, is how are we utilizing our ESPs, you know, you know, from like spring till like now, and what's kind of, in order to support our teachers and whether it's in DLA or hybrid?
Are you thinking mainly in special education where most of our ESPs tend to serve?
Yeah. I'm kind of thinking all of it, but sure, that's.
Well, we have different kinds of roles for our ESPs, but I give you kind of a sense for what might be typical. So in our resource programs in special education, our ESPs there are really assisting students with lessons, they're taking notes, providing extra help with concepts, reading tests, time management skills, and also spending time with collaborating and planning with their supervising teachers and case managers. And then also on those distance learning days, whenever possible, connecting with students when directed or supported by their supervising teacher or case manager. And our setting three programs, it's a little bit different in the sense that they're really spending their time with planned activities, you know, with students. So that might be supporting, working with manipulatives or worksheets, or maybe it's discrete goals in their IPs or reteaching concepts that have been introduced by the teacher, social skills and those social, emotional learning skills. They're also often trying to develop strategies that are laid out in their IPs that are disability specific, as well as, again, collaborating with their case managers and supervising teachers. So it, it's pretty, there's some crossover that are similar, whether it's distance learning or DLA, or whether it's in the in-person day. We try to stay focused on those core things that can make the most impact.
Sure.
For student learning. So that's just kind of a short list of things that, whether, whether they're in resource, setting three, even, even our due process ESPs are doing similar things.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Board members, any additional questions?
I just had one.
Thank you, Director Douglas.
Technical question, I guess, about the question, line of questioning that you had about the timeframe?
Okay.
Is there any language that the state has provided about data points, like the timeframe? I feel like there was something about the space between data points and when a decision had to be made that would impact our rushed or not rushed.
Right. Yeah, so if, I'm glad you brought it up because I've had that question a few times and I kind of missed it. Typically, you're looking for trends. So the guidance normally is three, three data points is a trend, and whenever we have the ability to get a trend, that helps. But taking into consideration if things are increasing at a rapid rate, like last time we made a decision after two data points, after consultation with our state and county officials. So the general guideline is three, but you also, it depends on if you're outside of the model recommendations or within the, the parameters of the model. So it's easier to wait for those three if you're within the parameters, making a new decision, but if you're outside those parameters, then you may not be able to wait for three. So there's kind of a general rule of thumb, unless, right?
Sure.
Yeah, unless the situations warrant acting sooner.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, item number eight. Board members, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to remove for separate consideration? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
No.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I just want to point out to everybody that there are many grants this month, a lot of them from the federal government and the state government. They're actually part of our budget, but they're called grants because of arcane accounting rules, but there is quite a bit of that in there. Preschool grants, Perkins grants, homeless grants, Infant and Tyler Program, American Indian Education, Special Education Funds, Magnet School, and several others. So there is quite a bit of that in there, and there is the contract with Ewald Consulting. So with that, all in favor, or is there any other discussion? All in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, the consent agenda is accepted. Next on the list is agenda item number nine, which are the action items. And tonight we have a resolution for relating to the general obligation facilities maintenance and refunding bond, Series 2020A for thirty-six million, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And Ron Meyer and Jody will be discussing that.
Okay.
Ron?
Thank you, and good evening, Cheryl Stoffey, Superintendent McIntyre, and school board members. We received bids this morning for this bond issue, which, once again, is a combination of financing for our ten-year LTFM plan as well as the refunding of our Series 2011A and 2013A alternate facilities bonds. I am happy to report that we received some very favorable rates through this bid process. And so Jody Zespa, who is a senior municipal advisor with Ellers and Associates, who is our financial advisors, is here to give us some details of the results of the bid. So Jody.
Good evening, Ms. Zespa.
Good evening. Thanks a lot. And we didn't even steal any of the thunder. We have such a great low rate for you tonight, so we're thrilled to be able to present the results to you. If you turn to the inside front cover of the sale day report that we have for you, as Ron mentioned, we're financing facilities maintenance projects as well as the refinancing of your 2011 and 2013A bond issues. You did get your underlying rating of a double A1 affirmed by Moody's, that is a very high rating. There are only three districts in the state of Minnesota that have a higher rating than that, and that is the second highest rating that Moody's assigns. So it was great to see that affirmed. Kelly and Ron participated in a conference call, they did a lot of preparation ahead of time, and were able to answer all of the questions and provide a lot of very helpful information as part of that call. So thank you to them for all of their effort. I know they've got a lot of balls in there also, and so we really appreciate the extra time that they put into this process. It really is very helpful in getting you the results that you received today. So in addition to the underlying rating, you do participate in the state credit enhancement program, process, program, and that allows you to get that second rating at a double A two. The state guarantees the payment of your debt should you not be able to make a payment. So we always recommend that you participate in that process just to give a little extra insurance to the people who are bidding on the bonds, and there's no cost to participate in the program. So the state provides that to you free of charge. You did receive five bids, which was great. We'd like to see at least three. The low bidder was FHN Financial Capital Markets out of Memphis, Tennessee, and that low rate that you see there is a one point seven one percent. So I will go through, if you turn to the second page there, I just want to cover those notes. So that true interest cost rate of one point seven one, we were estimating a rate of two point oh one percent a month ago, so we're well below that. In terms of the different components of the bond issue, your facilities maintenance bonds now are seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars less in principal and interest payments because of that low rate. The rate on that component of the bond issue is a one point eight five percent, and we were planning on a two point one two. And then look at those rates on your refunding bonds, so point three seven percent. And on the 2011, we had been anticipating just a little above one percent, same with the 2013. So the total savings on the refunding bonds are about six hundred thousand dollars. And when that gets translated to your property taxpayers, you're required to levy at a hundred and five percent. So the total debt service levy savings is about six hundred and twenty-five thousand. You are not able to keep that for other areas of your budget, you are required to pass that on as a savings to your taxpayers, so they will see that. And you, we know you've already adopted your proposed levy, so the way that the timing works then, this will provide the new schedules to the state, they will include that on the final levy that you're approving in December, and then your taxpayers will see that in their final statements next spring. So then I will direct you to the bid tab, which is attachments, page one, and you can see how close the bids were. So we're, we always think this is really exciting in our office when we see how close the bids come in, and FHN was a one point seven zero six six with Citigroup out of Dallas at one point seven zero nine five. So really close. And then the other bids, all of them were, were. the bids come in, and FHN was a one point seven zero six six with, uh, Citigroup out of Dallas at one point seven zero nine five. So really close. And then, um, the other bids, all of them were, were lower than what we were expecting in our pre-sale estimates, um, so you also received a bid from Barrett out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, Piper Sandler, which is the old Piper Jaffrey out of Minneapolis, JP Morgan out of New York, and they were at a one point nine nine. So your highest bidder was still below what we were expecting. But nice to see those nice tight bids too. Um, the next series of financial schedules are the exact same schedules that we talked about last month, they're just updated now for the sale results. So we have a sources and uses schedule, um, on attachments, page three, we have the debt service schedule overall for all three components of the bond issue. Attachments, page four, is just the facilities maintenance portion then for the new projects as part of your ten-year plan. Um, page five is the prior debt service schedule that you're committed to right now for your two thousand eleven bond, so that has not changed at all. But the new debt service schedule with that nice low rate of point three seven percent is, um, on attachments, page six. The savings for the two thousand eleven then bond issue at about, almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then the same set of schedules for your two thousand thirteen bond issue with the existing debt schedule being the same one that we talked about last month, and then the new schedule, and then the savings at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the two thousand thirteen A bond issue. And then next is our, uh, favorite schedule in about size two font, which is your detailed long-term financing plan, and our goal here is always to maintain your, um, debt service and capital levies as level as possible unless your voters approve a change. And so we have done that where there'll be a slight little dip in your tax rate for taxes payable in two thousand twenty-one as they put that new levy, that reduced levy on for you. And then I would just say that we have some pretty conservative assumptions built in here going forward, so we feel like the plan is definitely achievable. And then on page twelve, I think it's just nice to see, you know, that in, um, in visual graph form, what we, what your debt service and capital tax rates are expected to look like over time, again, nice and level with the dropdown later on in the schedule to provide you some future flexibility. And then as part of the rating process, there are two reports issued on your behalf. So the first is a press release, that starts on attachments, page thirteen, and I would draw your attention to the ratings rationale in that second paragraph there. So they mention your large and growing tax base in the Twin Cities metro area, strong resident income levels, a healthy financial position, moderate debt burden and elevated pension burden, and all of the school districts in the state of Minnesota, because you participate in the T R A and P E R A programs, get that comment. So that's, those are statewide programs. And then finally, um, the credit, detailed credit opinion starts with attachments, page eighteen. That's a little bit more colorful, but kind of goes through, um, those overall, um, comments that they made, but in a little more, a little bit more detail and provide some historical information and, um, other data based upon the conversation that we had. Um, we did have a question from Ron, he wondered what it would take to get to the triple A category, and they did say that the triple A districts do have, um, a higher tax base, higher socioeconomic, um, indicators, that sort of thing, and they said a moderation in, in the pension burden would also be helpful, and that's, all of those things, really, those three things that they mentioned are kind of out of your control. Um, what he said is that everything that is within your control from a financial perspective, that sort of thing, are very, very strong. So I think certainly doing everything that you can in order to keep that nice high rating. And that's what I have, that's all the good news. We're very excited to share those results, and we certainly thank you for the opportunity to be of service to you. It's really fun to work on refunding bond issues and have some savings to report, so.
Anytime you can save me over a million bucks, come on back.
Right.
Uh, so with that, I, I have a question regarding the action item. It says, uh, a, a motion to approve a resolution regarding thirty-six million six hundred forty-five thousand, but in the document dated today, it says it's actually thirty-six million four sixty-five.
That's correct.
Okay.
So the resolution should be updated to have the four sixty-five. Does, are you seeing that?
Well, it's not on my agenda here, but I, I just wanted to clarify that the numbers weren't just transposed.
That's correct. No, we did decrease the size of the bond issue because we had a little bit, bigger premium on the refunding bond portions than we expected.
Okay. So with that, is there a motion to approve the resolution rating, uh, relating to thirty-six million dollars, thirty-six million four hundred sixty-five thousand dollars in general obligation facilities maintenance and refunding bonds, series twenty-twenty A, authorizing the issuance, awarding the sale, prescribing the form and details and providing for the payment thereof?
So moved.
We have, uh, a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a second, is there any discussion?
No, this, this daughter of a CPA is totally geeking out on this, this is exciting.
So.
Chair Stoffey, could I just, I wanted to say thank you-
Yep.
... for the support and consultation and expertise that you provide to us and our team, and thank you for driving all the way from Woodbury over here tonight.
Oh, not a brashy.
So, yeah, hopefully the roads are better. So thank you, uh, very much, and, uh, is there any other discussion?
No, I just would echo the appreciation and, um, being in this position to be able to take advantage of low rates, um, and to, uh, to serve the needs of our students while being financially responsible. Only comes because we have a strong finance department, we have strong partners, we have the direction of superintendents over time and of boards who, um, have set this expectation, so it takes, um, quite a history to get where we are today, and I appreciate all the work that goes into it.
And the, uh, first sentence of the third paragraph in the summary, "We expect the district's financial profile will remain strong due to prudent budgeting practices and healthy reserves." So, uh, thank you.
Yeah, there are a lot of positive comments. I encourage you, if you have time at some point, to take a look through it in more detail, but yes, it was very, very, very positive.
Okay. Uh, with that, we'll call the vote. All in favor of, uh, uh, accepting the motion, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next action item is the recommendation for approval on terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District two seventy-nine School Board and the hourly technical employees group, July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Laura Anderson will share the information.
Good evening, Chair Stoffey.
Good evening.
School board members, Superintendent McIntyre. On the agenda this evening for school board action is a recommendation for approval of the terms and conditions of employment for the hour tech, hourly technical employees. Our hourly technical group consists of fifty-nine employees comprised of various positions, including but not limited to those working in publications, technology and networking, information systems, water safety, laundry, family services, transportation and bilingual assistance. The agreement expired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and the new agreement contains language changes that reflect current district practices, as well as additional provisions that serve to support our district mission and strategic priorities. School board members have had the opportunity to review the proposed changes to the provisions contained in the terms and conditions, to ask questions, dialogue about the new provisions, and to consider financial implications. The new contract falls within the parameters, financial parameters set by the board for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two school, school year contract term. It is the superintendent's and my recommendation that you approve the employee contract presented to you this evening.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is, uh, is there a motion to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District two seventy-nine School Board and the hourly technical employees group, July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? We'll start with, uh, Ms. Douglas. Nope?
Aye.
Okay. Director Muscata Jones?
Thank you.
Director Simons?
Uh, no questions.
Director Dawson-Waltman? Director Bristol?
No questions.
And I will keep it short also. Thank you, uh, very much. Uh, with that, uh, all in favor of accepting the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes six to nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Final action item, uh, this evening is the recommendation to accept gifts to the district totaling nine thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars. Uh, is there a motion to accept gifts to the district totaling nine thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars?
So moved.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Again, I get to say thank you and we will accept it graciously. Thank you to everyone, uh, individuals, organizations, companies, churches, everyone who has donated. Uh, again, thank you very much. All in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And our final agenda item is adjournment, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, six to nothing, and we are adjourned at seven oh one, our fastest meeting in a long time. Thank you, everybody, and everyone watching, thank you, have a great evening.